Good evening, welcome to the Township of Lacey, November 13, 2014 meeting. Addictive notice of this meeting is being given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to public clause of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and a beacon was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. We're going to begin with a salute to the flag and a moment of silence.
(Inaudible)
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 Okay, item number one, first reading of ordinance 2014-22 vacating a portion of Delaware Avenue.
In order to the Township of Lacey County, Bush State, New Jersey, vacating all the right title in interest of the Township of Lacey and a portion of the paper street known as Delaware Avenue to the adjoining property owners of block 2810 lots 1 through 12. This is a parcel about 300 feet long by 50 feet wide of a paper street out west of the Garden State Parkway that the adjoining property owner is purchasing.
Have motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Caratolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number two, first reading of ordinance 2014-23 authorizing the sale of a portion of Delaware Avenue.
Ordinance of Township of Lacey County, Bush State, New Jersey, authorizing the sale of a vacated portion of a paper street adjoining block 2810 lots 1 through 12 to Mrs. Heather Schonenberg in accordance with NJSA 4 vehicle and 12 dash 13B5. This is, again, a 300 by 50-foot paper street that Ms. Schonenberg is purchasing from the Township of Lacey for $21,000 plus legal fees and engineering fees and recording fees.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Caratolo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number three, second reading of ordinance 2014-19 amending chapter 161 secondhand dealers.
In order to the Township of Lacey County, Bush State, New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter 161 of the Township Code of the Township of Lacey entitled Dealer Secondhand so as to amend various sections. This is putting into place the reporting system for secondhand dealers that they have to enroll in the rapid reporting system in order to register the goods that somebody would come in and wish to sell to a pawn shop. And this is all going through Ocean County now, all secondhand dealers and pawn shops and jewelry stores that have licenses to sell precious metals need to register in this so that this is another way to track down stolen goods.
Being the second reading, open to the floor if any public comment.
See, now motion to close the floor.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Caratolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number four, second reading of ordinance 2014-20 amending chapter 273 of property maintenance.
In order to the Township of Lacey County, Bush State, New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter 273 of the Township Code of the Township of Lacey entitled Property Maintenance so as to create section 273 dash 4 abandoned and vacant properties. This is with regards to those properties that become abandoned and vacant and then become a code issue with regards to whether the house is dilapidated or the grass is too tall, that the notification will be given to the creditor or the mortgage holder of the property and they would be responsible for maintaining that house or go through the same issuances of liens being placed on that house to maintain it.
Being the second reading, I'll open to the public.
See, now motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion on it?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Caratolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number five, resolution 2014-258 appointing a Class II law enforcement officer.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Bush State, New Jersey, appointing Edgarius Lenkakis as Class II Special Law Enforcement Officer for the Township of Lacey.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Caratolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number six, resolution 2014-259 authorizing a change order to the Stouts Creek Maintenance Dredging Project.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Bush State, New Jersey, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the contract with Albert Marine Construction for the Stouts Creek Maintenance Dredging Project. There was additional material taken out of the Stouts Creek. It caused an increase in the project in the amount of $12,880.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Caratolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number seven, resolution 2014-260 awarding a contract for roadside deer carcass removal.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Bush State, New Jersey, awarding a contract for roadside deer carcass removal to Kelly Winthrop LLC. This is a two-year contract, this is the same contractor that the county uses, it's $29 per animal.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Caratolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number eight, resolution 2014-261 authorizing the execution of an interlocal services agreement with the county of motion for license plate recognition server database.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Bush State, New Jersey, authorizing execution of an interlocal services agreement with the county of motion for the administration of the automated license plate recognition server database. This is for us to utilize their database for the license plate recognition program.
Can I have a move it?
Second.
Mr. Caratolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number nine, resolution 2014-262 authorizing placement of a lien on block 277 lot 4 for property maintenance.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Bush State, New Jersey, accepting the certification of the township administrator concerning costs incurred in the removal of persons and tenants and additional housing costs for the property located at 103 Chestnut Street and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said cost. There was code violations at the house at 103 Chestnut Street, there was a tenant in there which we had to displace. Based on the way the law is written, the township had to cover the tenant's housing for the week, plus there was legal fees and other items that were incurred, the lien will be in the amount of $2,186.42.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Caratolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number 10, resolution 2014-263 authorizing placement of a lien on block 1448 lot 32 for property maintenance.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Bush State, New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up the property located at 419 Alpine Street and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said cost. This was a house cleanup, they dumped it at the curb, the garbage company doesn't pick it up, the garbage company sent in a separate dumpster and we are putting a lien in the amount of $125 for the extra pickup.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Caratolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number 11, resolution 2014-264 authorizing release of a maintenance bond for block 852.02 lot 5.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Bush State, New Jersey, authorizing release of a site improvement maintenance guarantee for lakeside heating and air conditioning at block 852.02 lot 5. This has met its two-year retention period and the engineer has authorized us to release the bond.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Caratolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number 12, resolution 2014-265 authorizing taxes on exempt properties.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Bush State, New Jersey, canceling certain tax overpayment balances on exempt properties to surplus.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Caratolo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number 13, resolution 2014-266 canceling tax credit balances under $10.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Bush State, New Jersey, canceling certain tax credit balances under $10.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Caratolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number 14, resolution 2014-267 transferring tax credit balances from 2014 to 2015.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Bush State, New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to transfer credit balances from the year 2014 to the year 2015.
Can I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Caratolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number 15, resolution 2014-268 authorizing refund of deposit monies.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Bush State, New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Caratolo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number 16, resolution 2014-269 authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Bush State, New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $5,660,785.95.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Caratolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number 17, monthly reports.
Municipal courts office collected receipts for the month of October in the amount of $8,498.76. For the month of October, the Department of Community Development collected receipts in the amount of $85,764. For the month of October, road opening permits were collected in the amount of $6,957.50 and recycling commodities were collected in the amount of $560. And the municipal court for the month of September collected receipts in the amount of $32,105.37.
Motion to accept the reports as read?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 18, motion to approve township meeting minutes of October 23, 2014.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 19, motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of October 23, 2014.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 20, motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of November 5, 2014.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 21, motion to approve bingo license applications for the Lacey Elks Charitable Foundation and the Knights of Columbus.
Move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any others?
Yes, I have one add-on, it's a resolution number 270, resolution of township Lacey County, Bush State, New Jersey, authorizing a transfer of appropriations in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 48 colon 4 dash 5. We are transferring money from recreation other expenses to recreation salaries and wages and from tax administration, tax assessment administration salaries and wages to tax assessment other expenses. And the total amount will be $13,000.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Caratolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
That's all I have to add on.
Okay, comments from the committee, Mr. Dykoff?
Thank you. First, I'd like to recognize the candidates who ran for the committee and the school board, it takes a lot to put yourself out there. Most people just talk the talk and these people walk the walk, put themselves out there, put their families out there. I'm sure like me and the rest of us up there, we're glad it's over. I'd like to congratulate the two winners, Nick Caratolo, three winners, I'm sorry, Nick Caratolo.
Nick Giuliani.
Nick Giuliani.
(Laughter)
All right, I'm sorry. Caratolo, Giuliani, DeSenza, Dave Bidwell, Regina DeSenza. Good luck to you, all three of you, I'm sure you'll do a great job. I'm sure you're all put a lot of heart and soul into the position that you've been elected to and it's all downhill from here. And then Veterans Day, the other morning I had the pleasure to attend the ceremony out front for Veterans Day we have every year and it's a somber moment but a happy moment to know that we live in a great country where we have people who fight for us. Our veterans liaison, Mr. Caratolo, spoke on behalf of the township committee and he spoke from the heart, as did most of the people there, it was kind of nice. Normally, we've got a lot of speakers and I'm normally not one to speak from a prepared speech and I find that it's, people sound better when they speak from the heart and the speakers there did and it was, it was nice, it really was. So, the sad part is that every year I go there and the veterans are getting older and older and thinner and thinner, there's not as many people around, but the ones who came out, I want to thank them for coming out to honor those who fight for this country. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you very much.
Mr. Caratolo?
Well, thank you Deputy Mayor Dykoff, yes, it's a, it was a great honor this year. I was fortunate enough to serve as liaison to our Veterans Commission and to our soldiers, sailors, airmen and marines, I want to thank you. It's your sacrifice, your family's sacrifice, your friends, it's from the heart. And specifically, I went out there in Bicentennial Park that day and I had no prepared speech and that's the way I wanted it. I thank you for your service, I thank you for your time, I know that some of our veterans are in the, in our audience here tonight and again, kudos, you deserve all the good things in life and I hope to serve on that commission for many years to come, God willing. I also have one announcement, I've been contacted by Mr. Rich Bard of the Elks and I, you know, last month, last meeting up here, we talked about the Lacey Food Bank and we talked about our support and I think it's very appropriate, I was very glad that Rich had texted me because we have a Christmas parade coming up on December 7th starting at 3:00 PM and it'll go from the Lacey United Methodist Church to Town Hall here. And we ask that anybody that participates in the parade, anybody, spectators that come out to the parade, bring your children, bring your great holiday cheer and I'd like to say Merry Christmas and Happy Thanksgiving to everyone, but also bring a non-perishable food item because we have, as Rich has informed me, some of our youth in the community, and I think he had a name for these particular young people, the Antler Youth Volunteers. So, it was nice to hear that and to see that come to me in an email. So if you have an opportunity to come out, visit, revel, enjoy each other's company, see Santa and bring a non-perishable food item, it'll go directly to Lacey Food Bank and I've got to tell you, you know, working for the county, unfortunately there's some hungry families out there and we try to do all we can to try to cover that, any type of gifts for holiday celebration and food for Thanksgiving. Thank you so much, take care and have a great night.
Thank you Mayor. I'd also like to congratulate last week's winners from the election, I'd also like to thank all the people in the town that took the time to vote and please continue to do so in the future, thank you. David?
Yes. How you doing there Mayor? I'll catch up to you, sorry. I want to first thank the Municipal Alliance, we sponsored a plane with a message from a banner and it's, and it was at the football game and it said, "Parents Who Host Lose the Most" and it said, "Go Lions" on the bottom of it. So, we have a couple ordinances in place, we have one which we adopted, how many years ago Veronica, that was quite a few years ago?
I think about three, yes.
Three years ago, we have a private property ordinance and Mr. Caratolo suggested we put it on a website so everybody can be informed on it as well as the host drinking, correct Pete?
Thank you, yes, that's true.
So, maybe we can make that happen and educate families to know that, you know, if you're going to get involved in that kind of stuff, the liability is so strong, I don't think you want to endure that. The other one is, the other topic I have here is the food bank, they sent a message to me, one of our clients desperately needs a gas dryer, so they say this makes the need for Ed's Social Service Fund to be publicized for a much-needed account balance for these emergencies, so you know what, if you don't have a dryer and you feel generous, if you could bring some funds down there for the people that really need these important things like dryers and refrigerators when they're down and out and they can need some help from folks that are able to help them, so please don't forget the food bank as well as the holidays and you can contact Guy Burnett or, I'm sure we have Veronica, we have the food bank number on the website?
Yes, it is and they have their own website as well.
Excellent. And I too would like to thank the veterans for their sacrifice, I run every year with the fallen heroes and they memorialize a fallen comrade every mile through our town from Cape May all the way to the Veterans Memorial, which is the Vietnam Veterans Memorial at Holmdale and it's a brigade, about 30 men and women and it's amazing, they're active military, in fact, one fella, he had a prosthetic a half a foot and it's just amazing the sacrifice that our military have given us through the years for our freedoms and our liberties, so I want to pray for the heroes that have basically made the ultimate sacrifice, their lives and I also want to thank the veterans and we have some veterans in the audience here and I want to say thank you for your service and it's because of your service that we enjoy our freedoms, so thank you for that. And I too would like to congratulate all the new elected people this election and I wish them luck, so Nick, good luck, I'm sure you'll do a great job for the town and that's all I have to say Mayor, thank you.
Thanks David. Okay, again, congratulations to the election winners, Mr. Giuliani, Mr. Chenza here tonight, Mr. Bidwell watching, I'm sure at home, you've got big shoes to fill, you have a lot of work ahead of you, so we certainly wish you the very best and hope it's a lot of fun for you as well as a lot of dedication and work. I also want to recognize the individuals that ran for office that were not elected, Mr. Panzer, Mr. Noel, and Mr. Kennis, Mr. Latellia, and Mr. Klaus. Like Mark said, it takes a lot to put yourself out there, to put your name out there, to get involved in a campaign, it's a lot on the individual as well as on the family and it's something that not everybody succeeds in, but you know, just stepping up to the plate and doing it means a lot and it's certainly something I want to thank those individuals for. I also want to extend a special thanks to Jack Martinack and Bruce Conney who are going to be stepping down on the school board, they've been there a long time, I know Bruce started out, Bruce and I were running mates our first election years ago and I have the ultimate respect for both of those men and I think they've done a good job, they've had some bumps in the road like any of us do in public office, but I wish them the best and I hope they get out there and start enjoying their life. Dave's going to be leaving us, but we'll save our thank yous for you Dave and you know, well, well wishes for Dave until next month, he will be here until December Dave, so make sure you show up. Veterans Day, I want to thank the vets, I apologize, I was out of town and I had extended an invitation to Peter to speak on behalf of the committee being that he represents the Veterans Commission, but my wife and I were away, but I understand it was a beautiful celebration, the park looked great and as everyone up here, you know, says over and over again, we would not enjoy what we enjoy in this great country of ours without the dedication to service that the vets have given over their different generations, so thank you to those here tonight, thank you to anyone else that's not here that's watching from home. I just have a couple quick comments, most people know, as of now I'm sure, that the roadway permit has been issued on the railroad right-of-way and I just want to touch on a couple things tonight because there's a lot of rumors flying around town, there's a lot of information that's being put out there that's not actual factual information and I just want to put out the information that is factual, that's part of the permit and where we're at as of right now. The permit itself for railroad right-of-way was issued by the DEP, I guess it was about three weeks ago?
October 16.
October 16th, it was issued to us on a Friday, we got the call on a Thursday afternoon that the permit was going to be issued and that was the only notice we had that we were going to be able to pick up the permit, which we did, picked up the permit on Friday morning, we brought it back to Tom's River, we had it filed in accordance with the conditions of the permit and in accordance with the conditions, we also notified the DEP that it was filed and that we're going to be starting work on the project within seven days after the permit itself, which were all conditions of the approval itself. There's a lot of folks out there that are saying, you know, we're building this two-mile roadway from one end of town to the neck, to the other end of town, which I want people to understand that is not the case. We were issued a permit by the DEP to build the entire 1.9 mile roadway, but this governing body took and discussed the issue itself and based on the fact that some of the situations have changed during the eight-year process that we've gone through to get the permit, we felt that it was best to take and minimize the amount of the roadway at this point in time based on economic conditions and money available as well as seeing the relief we get from the portion of the roadway that we're going to be building. So the governing body has taken and authorized that the roadway be built from Lacey Road to the Sunrise Boulevard extension next to Home Depot where the roadway is already existing that was built by Home Depot at their expense for the taxpayers of this town. So we are underway, we are under construction to build specifically that area of roadway, it's roughly I believe about 1,750 linear feet of roadway that's going to be built. If and when the rest of the roadway ever gets built is something that's going to be up to, you know, future governing bodies if they choose to, you know, move on further down the road, that's going to be their choice, whoever's sitting up in these seats does have the opportunity to do it based on whether there's going to be a need for it for traffic or not. We are building the bike path, which I know a lot of people have a major concern about and all five people sitting up here on this governing body are 100% behind that bike path in support of the construction of the entire bike path all the way through Lacey Township, which Freehold Lacey has, you know, been building slowly throughout the entire south end of the county. We want to see that built, so what we're doing, even though we're building the roadway from Lacey Road up until Sunrise Boulevard, we are building, incorporating into our bid process, the building of the bike path from Lacey Road up to Musket Drive. So that section of the bike path will be constructed and complete, you know, and be finished totally even though the roadway is going to only end at Sunrise Boulevard, so people will be able to take and utilize that bike path. The bike path, the cost of the bike path is going to be reimbursed to the governing, to the township by Ocean County, but Ocean County has asked us to take and incorporate it into our bid and the cost will be given back to us by the county, whatever the cost of that portion of it is. Also with regards to the bike path, just so folks are up to date on it, we have also Also, with regards to the bike path, just so folks are up to date on it, we have also met with the county, Veronica, who was out last week with myself, I guess a week and a half ago?
Yeah.
And Casey Parker. And the county is moving forward with putting out to obtain the grant money to build the bike path from Cedar Creek, which is the northern border, bordering Bayville, down to South Street. So, the county is intending to start on that portion of the bike trail this year, which would only leave from South Street over to Musket Drive. That would still have to be built at some point in the future. But we are going to take and work with the county to make sure that that gets going, and that the bike path, for the most part, is going to be built throughout most of the town. There's a lot of questions, well, you know, we had a meeting, I guess it was about a week and a half ago, where we had to take and have a meeting in the morning because of the fact that we had to take and get things in motion, because of the fact that we have a grant of $1,080,000, $1,060,000?
Yes, correct.
That we're going to be receiving from the New Jersey Department of Transportation. Because of the fact that we're under time constraints with that money, which is due to expire in January, we had a quick meeting, which some people say was wrong, but we did everything by the law, we did everything through advertising, so that we could get step one in place and be able to start moving forward. That money, just so folks know, when you're talking about a grant, that's free money. That's money that the taxpayers are going to benefit from, that's going to go into the construction of this roadway, and there'll be no tax on the backs of the taxpayers to utilize that portion of the roadway itself. So, because of the fact that we had to take and act on it fairly quickly, we did what we had to do, we put it into motion, and we are now under an agreement with the New Jersey Department of Transportation to get that money from them. They're going to be giving it to us to put towards the overall cost of the road. So, we've gotten a estimate to building the portion of the roadway and the bike path that we're going to be building, and it's come in at 2.4 million. We're getting back $1,060,000 from the DOT, which is going to be applied to that. And we're anticipating getting back a half million dollars from the county to build the bike path. So, the amount of money that the town is going to be spending is, you know, nowhere near the 2.4 million once we're reimbursed for the monies that we're going to be reimbursed for. But I just want people to understand that, you know, if you hear something out there and you're not 100% sure if it's factual, pick up the phone, call Town Hall, we're available to talk to people, we're available to take and meet with people, anybody can come in here. What's really, you know, something that's been bothering me for the last week and a half is, we all recognize the fact that the town is on one side, the Rail Trail Group is on the other side. And I certainly have the utmost respect for the Rail Trail Group. But the stuff that is coming out of the Rail Trail Group is something that I have a problem with, because I guess a week and a half ago, right after the roadway was started, I had a call from Channel 12 News, and I had a call from the Asbury Park Press, who had spoken to Mrs. Barley, who's the head of the Rail Trail Group. And Mrs. Barley was telling me, we're building the road from one end of town to the other end of town, and the fact that the only person benefiting from this roadway in this town is going to be Mayor Quinn and former Mayor John Parker, because they both own property along the rail trail, and they're both going to be building on that property. So, folks, understand, right from the beginning, when this project was first discussed and put on the books, Mayor Parker was sitting here, I was sitting up here, and between the five people that were sitting up here, including the two of us, we made it a point to see that that roadway, when it was built, if it was ever approved and built, was built only to move traffic. And we requested that there be a condition put in the permit when it was issued, identifying the fact that it's only to move traffic. I have the document with me tonight, and I'm just going to read everyone, page three of the permit itself. Item number 14 says, "No additional curb cuts may be made in the approved project area, other than those currently depicted on the above referenced approved plans, thus prohibiting any additional future points of ingress or egress to the new roadway. The permit allows for an ingress and egress to be built on the roadway going into St. Pious Church and going into the Fork River School," which has been the utmost importance to this governing body from day one, to give the St. Pious Church an alternate way to get in and out of their parking lot without having to come out on a full-lane road when traffic is going up and down the road. And at Fork River School, we're trying to create a safer haven for the buses to be able to go in and out. Those are the only two areas that are going to be permitted to go onto that roadway. The roadway itself is going to be built for moving traffic. This governing body has already discussed the fact that we're going to put an ordinance in place, not allowing any truck traffic. We're not going to have delivery trucks going down there to Walmart. We're not going to have trucks going down to Home Depot. It is specifically being built to move traffic and for the safety of those two entities. What really irked me was I had run into Donna Barley in the produce section over at Chop Right, two days before I get a call from Channel 12 News. And I explained all this to Mrs. Barley, and Mrs. Barley was well aware of the situation. And when the two newspapers reached out to me, they're telling me, well, you know, Mrs. Barley said this to me yesterday. You know, fortunately, they picked up the phone and called me, and I provided all the documentation. I own no property along the River Right-Away, other than my Georgetown apartments. My Georgetown apartments are built, my second section is approved, and my only ingress and egress is coming out onto Musket Street. Mr. Parker owns no property along the River Right-Away. So, spreading rumors like that, that's going to say, okay, well, we're making out financially, is just wrong. If you want to take and attack me, attack me on something that there's factual backup on. But that's not something that Mr. Parker deserves, nor do I deserve, you know, as far as that goes. Don't just spread rumors. If you want to come in here and talk to me, I'll be happy to talk to anybody. But that is something that if it happens, I would rarely use this microphone as my voice for something like that, but that's going to be put out on the TV, because it's just not right. Donna and I go a long way back, I've known her, her mother-in-law lived in my apartments, you know, and I have the utmost respect for her, and everybody has their opinion. But, you know, don't spread rumors that are not true. That's the only thing I ask. The only thing with that rail trail situation that also bothers me, when Donna and I were talking, was the fact that there was a comment made by Donna, that the Rail Trail Group is going to challenge whether or not the township has the right to utilize that $1,060,000, because she believes that that money should be spent on state highways versus municipal roadways. Folks, I'll tell you right now, if the money is taken away from us because of a lawsuit by the Rail Trail, that million dollars, we're underway. We're going to take and have to spend that money, and it's going to be based on taxpayers having to pay it. So, if you know somebody in the Rail Trail, ask them to stay away from that issue, because that's free money to the municipality, that we want to make sure that we can certainly take and benefit. The roadway itself, if you've driven by it, I want everyone to understand, we have gone out there, we've started the work, we've done it with our own people, because this committee has been very self-conscious of the fact that we don't want to take and go outside of the area, the scope of the area that the roadway is approved for. So, Casey pulled his men off other projects that we have in town, and he put them out there so that, you know, Casey's guys can take their time and do it right, so we don't go beyond the scope that we're allowed to work within, whereas, and when the deals in construction knows that the contractors, Kerry, you're sitting here tonight, contractor's going to come in with a machine and just pretty much wipe it out of swab. So, we're doing everything we can to try and do it right, so that there's nothing done, you know, where people are going to be upset about it. But, folks, just give us a little time, let us build that first section. I truly believe it's going to be very beneficial for the taxpayers in this town, the residents in this town. But, you know, at the end of the day, if we end up in another litigation, it's just going to take and drag this thing out even more and spend a lot more money. So... I think that's all I have to say on that. Okay, I have one more comment, we're going to put that. That's it for my public comments. I'm going to open the floor for people to say, but Regina, you've got to wait one second, because we have Forrest is here tonight earning a merit badge. And Forrest Jennings, who lives out in Bamber, I'm going to ask you to come up and just to tell us all what you're here for, and, you know, just let us know what...I know you're very active in scouting, and you're our Eagle Scout here a little bit earlier. So, why don't you come up, because your dad is a very important player in this town when it comes to the Fork River Mountain Cleanup and everything he does in Bamber. So, we're very proud of him, so go right ahead, tell us what you're doing.
Well, I'm currently a lead scout, and I'm here to earn my citizenship in the community merit badge.
You enjoy nature and you enjoy all scouting stuff?
Yes.
You ever think you'd want to sit up here? Be honest. Not a chance, right?
Do you have any questions for the mayor, Forrest?
Um, just one, really. What and how much state aid would be taken away from the town if the town did not score, like, a passable score on the best practices worksheet?
It goes down, 100%, it goes down by 20%. So, you would lose 20% if we didn't score 100. And then it keeps trickling down as you rank less and less.
Any others?
No.
Forrest, we're really happy you came out tonight. I know you were here at another meeting, but I guess it didn't...
Kerry thought we still started at 8:00 at that last...we were in and out.
Regular meeting, yeah, 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 yeah. We wish you the best. I mean, like I said, we've known your dad many, many years, and he's a, you know, gentleman, he's a good person, he does a lot of good for this town. So, you come from good genes, and we're probably going to see a lot of you as, you know, your dad takes and steps down and retires, and you step up the ladder. So, we wish you the very best.
Good job, Forrest.
Nice job, delighted. Regina?
Regina descends the Sunset Drive Sunrise Beach. I have a few things. On October 1st, I was at the MUA meeting, and a very miraculous occurrence took place. Do you remember what that was?
I do.
Want to tell everybody?
No, you can tell them.
I can tell? Okay.
First time I ever saw it.
First time ever that I can recall, in all the years I've been attending MUA meetings, there will be no rate increase for 2015, because the OCUA, another miraculous occurrence, did not raise their rates, because usually our water rates go up, because the OCUA rates go up. I don't know what's happening up there, but something's going on, and we're not going to have a water rate increase for 2015. I thought people might want to know that.
Well, that was only one of the reasons. There were some other reasons.
Well, yeah.
But that was one reason.
A combination of factors.
But that was one reason.
They have a good positive chance.
And the OCUA doesn't raise their rates every year, but that was one of the reasons.
Oh, they kind of mostly do. There hardly been to a meeting where the rates weren't raised. I'd like to thank all the people that came forward for the Food Bank yard sale and made it a great success. Within an hour, there was so much stuff to sell, it was unbelievable how many people dropped off donations, and we thank everyone. It was the best yard sale ever, I was told. Also, I would like to ask the public, and especially the people here that seem to love this meeting so much, there's another meeting at 73 Haynes Street at the Lecture Hall on Monday night, the school board meeting, Monday night, the 17th, at 7:30. Mr. Moss is going to be very lonely and poor without me on the other side of the table come January. So, I'd like to ask some people to please, please start attending the school board meetings. Thank you.
Thanks, Regina. Frank? Just your name and address, Frank.
Frank descends the Sunset Drive. Peter's up. Mayor Quinn, I wanted to thank you for your efforts on Sunrise Boulevard. The Goodyear Way Hall was fixed by Casey Parker. I called him up, did a good job. We should have did that a long time ago. I might thank you. I wanted to ask you about the bond money that you've got approved. What will happen to that if you don't use it?
The...
We only borrow a little bit.
Yeah, we approve the ordinance, we put 5% out there into the budget itself, but we only borrow what we need when we need it. In other words, because if we, let's say we bond for a million dollars, that doesn't mean we're going to take a million dollars. We can take $200,000 and then keep drawing down on it as we move through the project.
But they're interested while sitting there?
The...well, we're not borrowing it. Yeah, we pay interest on the amount that we borrow, but nothing else.
What is your gut feeling on the probability of the road, whether with you or without you, in the future going forward? You know how I feel about that?
Yeah, yeah.
What would be your probability?
I think right now, with the improvements and stuff we've seen along Route 9, I think we're going to be okay. Now, that's not to say that there couldn't be something to change along the Route 9 corridor in the future. But I think the committee is, you know, on board right now with the fact that we wouldn't have gone and moved the bike path all the way to Musket if we had any intentions of building that section of the road in the near future.
I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, yeah. And again, the issue with the traffic, I know you and I talked about that. We don't want truck traffic on there, it's residences that live along there. And we are going to take, you know, Peter has the, just show them this, what it's going to look like. We are going to take and make sure that the final project looks like that picture. You know, having the bike path along the residences and then the roadway on the other side. So, and it's very important to us, as you and I have talked about, with the minimizing the trees being removed. That's why, like I said, Casey put all that facility fence up ourselves.
Appreciate your time.
Thanks, Frank. Mr. Letalia?
Good evening, Mayor, from the Letalia Lacy Township. Can you give me clarification on the bonding for this project, which I support the project, I supported it from the beginning? My question is, are the bonds designed in such a way as when you get the state money or the money back from the candidate, you can pay off the debt?
Yeah. Yeah, what we're doing is, we're taking out notes. The original bond itself was $3 million when we first went out and did the original ordinance. So, this is really a combination of two different ordinances, bringing up to $6 million. We've paid down the majority of the original bond itself at this point in time. So, what we're going to do is, as we move forward, we have to lay out the money for the DOT, and then it's a reimbursal thing once we get that money.
Once you get that money back, will you be able to apply to the debt?
We're going to pay it down. Yeah, debt's going to be paid right off.
I think that's important for people to know that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's not a long-term debt.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Community, so it's not going to give a long-term impact on the debt.
Right. Soon as we get that check, it's just going to be put right to the debt reduction on the $1,060,000.
The second question I have is, when do you hit Lacy Road, because it is, again, a request. Is there going to be a traffic light at that location?
Yeah, the county has put in all the infrastructure for the traffic light to be there. We're going to have to have the county take and update the traffic flow to make sure we have the car, you know, car flow that we're going to need to make that work.
Right.
But that was the main, you know, consideration in doing this, so that we can have a way for the traffic on the church and the schools to be able to get out of the traffic.
The reason, because over the last couple of months, I've heard people saying how unsafe it's going to be, because there's no flow for the buses to get out.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think it's important for the public to understand that this is a total concept where safety is...
It works, yeah.
...flowing the traffic. And I do see the need to bring it out to Musket Court, because it will keep the flow of traffic on Haynes Street, keep a lot of traffic off of Route 9.
Right.
Make it safer, because although the improvements on the Route 9, Lacy Road intersection does help some, it's not going to be...
Not at all, yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Moss?
I have a few things for...
Just your name and address, Bill.
No, Moss, just came drive toward the river beach. Off the wall a little bit, Mr. Dyckoff, has God helped you? Three or four weeks ago, you looked at Mrs. DeCheney's and said, "God help us if you get elected."
God help us. Well, we'll see. May's be seen.
We'll see. He already has, I can tell you.
Well, I hope so.
The next thing, the next thing I want to bring up very slightly is a little bit on the rail trail. I am sick and tired of seeing things like the Lacy Beacon that said rail trail turned into a roadway. Nothing about the bike path, giving all the people the tension that they're going to cover the whole thing up. From the Lacy Beacon, get the same thing from the rail trail. pave over it. Nothing about the bike path. I got a thing in one of the papers with the Lacy Beacon, about the Sierra Club. They're trying to get involved with the rail trail, just like Rutgers did, just like the Rail Trail Group did. They're saying a lot of things like children riding their bikes on there. And in the next statement, they're saying the thing is full of trees. They talk about there's already existing routes. That existing route, if you ask the people on Lake Barn to drive, what they think of having another road to get that traffic off of their road, you'll find out that that additional route is really wanted. They talk about hurting the animals, the bees, the bugs and the bees, but they have nothing to say about from Lacy Road to Ware Town. They're worried about a little path in a town where the speed limit more than likely is going to be 25 miles an hour. When up by the power plant, you've got a portion of the rail trail road, the bike path, less than two feet from Route 9. You can stick your hand out and hit a car if you reach over the little fence that they put there. They don't care about that. All they care about is the one section where some people live too close to the rail trail. They don't want it in their yard. I'm not going to go too deep into that.
Let me just make one comment, Bill, which I didn't bring up. For the folks that are listening and the ones that are here tonight, the trail itself, in addition to what we own as a municipality, over the last probably six or seven years, any applicants that come before the planning board, were also, that have property along that roadway, we are also putting a requirement on the applicants, the commercial property owners, that they have to donate 30 foot of their property, which, all these properties, myself included, I've given up 30 feet, probably, you know, 2,500 feet long, so that we have more buffers, to create more buffers for these property owners. And it's something that the property owners are all willing to do. So, we're trying to create as much open space as we can.
Right.
Keeping in mind that, you know, it's going to be a trail as well as a road.
And Mayor, you remember when we negotiated that with the property owners, that the county actually wanted to go back and make rail stations in the future?
Yeah, yeah.
Possibly.
Which is still in discussions, yeah, yeah.
Right, right. The next thing I want to bring up, the bills like I normally do. The total bills this month are $5,660,785. Keep in mind that $4,085,437.50 goes to Ocean County. Now, while I mention Ocean County, I want to bring up the Beach Boulevard Bridge. The bridge is only maybe four years old, and Ocean County had to come down on that brand-new bridge and rip off all of this cement, because it was peeling and cracking. But they replaced it with blacktop. And as we know, blacktop freezes a lot faster than cement because of the wind underneath. The bridge itself has a metal base underneath, and the bar thrown, the pilings going, the length of the bridge are preformed, so they have nothing to do with the way that cement was rotting on the bridge. The problem is, I just want to read one thing. At a low temperature below 0 degrees, blackice can form on a roadway from the moisture of automobile exhaust condenses on the road surfaces. Now, we've already had, if I'm not mistaken, last year, a problem with the top of that bridge freezing. It's going to be a lot worse now that we have black ice on it. I went to the bridge, and as I'm going eastbound the bridge, I see a sign further down the road that no taste of the bus stop. I get near the bridge, there's a sign that says, "No swimming, fishing, crabbing from any part of this bridge." A little bit further, I see a sign that shows a picture of a deer underneath that says deer. A little bit further, I got one that says, "No parking or standing." Come the other way, I got a sign that says, "No littering, up to a thousand-dollar fine." Whatever happens, and this is since the bridge has been built, there is no signs there to inform the homeowners that this breach freezes before the rest of the roadway. So, they're coming up there, they're hitting that bridge, and sooner or later, there's going to be some bad accidents up there, because now it'll freeze a lot faster than it did before. Blacktop freezes twice and three times faster than the concrete does. And all of Beach Boulevard, even though it is all blacktop, underneath the bridge, it freezes much faster, because there's no earth underneath of it to hold the heat. I would like the city to let Ocean County know that we should have some signs up there that says, "Bridge freezes before roadway."
Yeah, we'll reach out to Frank's county engineer, county engineer, and I'm sure he'll accommodate us on that. Bill, the county, the reason that bridge was torn up and replaced the concrete was not the county's work, it was because of the contract that it was hired to do it, was still on a maintenance bond, and the material didn't hold up the way it was supposed to hold up.
I understand that, but...
He was the one who came out and did.
They should have put concrete back now, because it takes a long port to freeze.
Yeah.
It's going to become a nightmare now with blacktop. Well, Casey will tell you when he starts having problems, right? Because he, Casey is not the one that's supposed to put salt on this bridge.
No, the county handles it.
The county's supposed to do it. And God forbid, it's taken them five years to, if they're going to put up a sign. How long is it taking them to go put salt on it? That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Otto?
My God.
Just your name and address, Otto?
Otto Zell, 743 Lake Drive Drive. I just wanted to, with all this that's going to be done and everything else, is any thought ever given to how are we ever going to control the pollution going into Deerhead Lake, when all the water from Lacy Road, from the Parkway to Lakeside, to Deerhead Lake Drive, goes straight down those streets into the lake, and there's not one catch basin on the whole darn area? The geese are making a big problem, but this also is part of the big problem why the lake is the way it is. I remember when I was a kid here, we didn't have this problem for one simple reason. None of the roads were paved. Everything was sand. So, the water that came down there naturally, went through the ground, was filtered before it ever hit the lake. Now, it's all running down a paved street into the lake, taking fertilizer and everything else that's along the way into it. And while I'm here, I'd like to ask, is the lake going to be drained again this winter, I hope?
Yes, yes. The permits have been in, and what happens is, if I was to drain them now, we get phone calls from the residents saying, "How can you do this to me before Thanksgiving? I have company coming over, I don't want them to see this." So, we can't make everybody happy, obviously.
I'm looking forward to it, since I have several branches from the winds and everything that are in the water off of my property that I'd like to clean up, and a lovely wash nest I'd like to get rid of.
Yeah, but they will be drained, as you know, and then we have to fill them back up come March 1st.
Okay. I thank you very much for that.
Mr. Zell, if I could?
Thanks.
If I could, you've been up to the day several times, I want to try to give you some peace of mind. Several of my colleagues at the County Department of Health test that body of water regularly. The results of those tests are posted publicly at our website. And what I'm here to tell you is, let us have a conversation, we'll talk about it. I can tell you factually, I've gone to our Assistant Public Health Coordinator in this county, and I do have paperwork that year over year, from 2012, '13 to '14, it was closed, I think it was approximately seven less times, 2014 over 2012. So, you know, efforts, our efforts in the township, they are bearing fruit. It is getting better. We do, we have an approved method from the State Health Department to test all bodies of water in this county, both fresh and salt. And there are people that are out, and they do that, and they do it frequently. And again, those, they're posted right now. You can see them right at our website. So, let's have a conversation. I'll answer any questions you may have. If I don't have the... If I don't have the answers for you to satisfaction, I'll get them from the colleagues that I work with.
Very good.
I promise you that.
I thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Because I feel so bad when I have pictures of that lake when we were younger, a lot younger, that it was the lake to really swim on, and we had an awful lot of fun on there. I had a sailboat on there for years, since I was a 15-year-old kid. And I can't even use a sailboat on there now, because of the grass wrapping around your centerboard and your rudder. The lake has really gone to the point where only a kayak is really a usable boat on that When you look back at it, I wonder what kind of progress we have made in the course of the years, as far as the environment goes. I mean, when I was a kid, nobody thought about the environment, it was just taken care of. Now, we all talk about the environment, and all it seems to do is get worse. So, I mean, talking about it isn't gonna do anything. Something has to be done, because that lake is gonna end up being a mill pond. It's working towards it very rapidly, and I would hate to see that happen.
Well, I would respectfully disagree with some of what you're saying, and I have not been here as long as you, but I can give you every assurance that there is oversight at the county level. We are, we have people that come out, I believe it's once a week during the bathing months, from Memorial Day to Labor Day.
Oh, I know that.
Okay, and I know them, and I know them personally, and I know they're dedicated to this. And we are working to essentially keep, our goal is to keep Lacy Township and this county clean and beautiful. We know there's tourism here. We know there's people that live in our bodies of water. We know how important it is. And so, I can give you every assurance that there's people with degrees and licenses that are working towards this all the time, full-time. So, you and I are gonna have a conversation and...
Well, the only thing I could say is, you can just look, now you're going back a few years. A few years ago, the kids were swimming up there, the kids' swimming lessons were at the lake, and everything else. This past year, I really think, if they ever kept the count, I don't think 100 people used that beach while the beach guards were there. And that is a way that you can really tell, is the beach better than it was, or is it worse? Why are people not using it? You put the beautiful parking lot in there, you routed the roads, you did everything else, everything, but really saved the lake. Because when people don't go there, there has to be a reason. I know myself, I, every morning in the summertime, the township has, the bulldozer coming there, and he scrapes the beach and grooms it, which is very good, but at the same time, he's burying all the goose doo-doo that's on the beach. So, what happens to this goose doo-doo? If your kids are there playing with their sand buckets, I don't have to go any further, they're gonna dig it up. And yet, if they didn't do this, the beach would be filled with it, because you can see that, not right now even. The part of the beach that was abandoned, which was the old beach on the south side of the lake, the bird crap is just covering it, complete, because it, we never got bulldozed. And it's even starting to grow grass on it now, and weeds, something that never went was there before. Now, I'm glad to see all of these rail trails and everything else done for recreation and everything else, and yet this great thing that the township has had for years, the three lakes, they first went down to two, and now it's going down to one. Because Lake Marnigot is the only one really being used now for recreational purposes. The others have just about been abandoned, and I hate to see this happen. And I hope that some thought is being given to what can be done. I'm not an expert on this by any means, nor, and I'm willing to listen to anybody who has some ideas, and I appreciate your input, because it's the first input we've had for a long time on this. And I just hope somewhere along the line, that some kind of a solution can happen. I know it's gonna be a long-term thing. I probably will never live to see it happen, but I'm gonna keep on complaining about it, and I'm gonna keep on talking about it, because I think that's the only way anybody is gonna do anything about it, ever. Thank you, Governor.
Thanks, Otto, thank you. Tim? Just your name and address, Bill.
Tim O'Connor, Sinclair Avenue. Just wanna say, glad to see the road finally being built, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Gary?
Gary McCarroll, 116 Heatherington Court. I might say something to make it some people annoyed me that supported me in the past, that's regarding the road, and we've talked about, Mr. Mayor, you know, my opinion has always been, I think it's likely to be spent in other ways, but this has been an issue that's been dragging the town down for, since, what, since 2001, I guess?
Eighteen, I think it is, yeah.
And I really think it's time to move on and build the road. I think what bothers me is that it comes to time, we have to, you know, you have to stop with the appeals, and I think certain people have to recognize that you're doing more harm than good, and that by filing appeals, you're costing the taxpayers money. And there's other ways to do that without costing taxpayers money, and it's what you did in November. Well, we had three election cycles that, where things could've changed if people wanted to, and, you know, where you had candidates who were against the road, and didn't get in, and you have enough votes to bond, and that, so, you know, you move on, and that's where you change. So, in the future, I will just say to these groups that are looking to sue, not stop, you know? And in five years, six years, seven years, whatever it might be, if you guys decide to build more of the road, maybe it was never up here, well, it's very simple. Whether they be Democrat, whether they be Republican, whether they be independent, just support those candidates that don't want the road, and if they get in, then you don't have enough votes to bond. What we have to stop with is wasting taxpayers' money, you know? Just move on. I mean, you know, this has been dividing the town, and I just think it's time we just move on again. Let's build the road and stop with appeals and stop wasting taxpayers' money. You know, I thank you for your time.
Thanks, Gary. Anyone else? Seeing non-motion to close the floor.
Second.
All favoring? Let's adjourn.
Second.
All favoring? Thanks, folks.
Not too bad.
Thanks, folks.